Okay, welcome everybody. I have a motion from the board to start a public hearing.
Take a motion.
All in favor? Okay, we're here for the public hearing on off-road vehicles in the village of Elba. Not in the town of Elba, in the village of Elba. Anyone wishing to speak must have signed the sign-in sheet beforehand, so if you haven't done it, now's your chance if you want to speak. The time limit is three minutes per speaker. We have to stick to that. Any disruptive behavior or abusive behavior, speaker will be asked to leave. Speakers will be called in the order they've signed in. Speakers are to state their concerns. We're not going to get into a dialogue back and forth. To state your concerns, so we can hear what your concerns are and take them into consideration. We won't vote on this law probably till next month's meeting. There's a couple, there are a couple of false misleading statements on Facebook. First, this law isn't new in this county. Town Batavia has the same law. Village of Oakfield has, and others are considering it. The snowmobile trails, you can still ride them like you always have, there's no change. We didn't change anything in the law. If you're crossing the road, like Barbie's place, that's perfectly fine. If it's somebody else's property, but they've allowed you to go on a snowmobile trail, this implies that you have approval to go on it. You don't need special approval to ride in a snowmobile trail that's already marked. This is mainly for four-wheelers, ATVs, dirt bikes that we have seen in the village in the last year, and a couple complaints, one that involved the law enforcement, which forced us to do this for liability reasons. As I say, the main reason is liability. And New York State has what's called a prior written notice law. So if you get notified of an issue, municipality is, has to act on it, or else they're liable. So we were notified, a complaint was filed with the sheriff's office. We were notified. The sheriff's office gave us a copy of the Town of Batavia law, so we discussed it at some of our meetings throughout the fall, and this is the exact same language as the Town of Batavia's. We are not, we did not change any vehicle and traffic laws, they are exactly the same as, they've been forever in New York State. Snowmobile laws are exactly the same. Nothing, we can't enforce anything, we're not going to enforce anything. This is mainly to protect ourselves and taxpayers of the village of Elba, in case little Johnny gets hit by somebody, you know there'd be a lawsuit filed, and they will say the village condoned this. By putting this on our local laws, we're just simply putting our law that we don't, that we're adhering to New York State's vehicle and traffic laws. So basically, nothing is different. Deputy, would you like to explain the vehicle and traffic?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deputy Schubert with the sheriff's office. We were asked here today, just to reiterate a couple of things. Nothing has changed in regards to the vehicle and traffic law in regards to UTVs. They are still considered a motor vehicle, so by definition, so therefore, any unregistered motor vehicle can't be on a public highway. So, as far as the ordinances go, being passed by them, these things aren't really affecting any existing laws, because they can't be operated on a public highway as it stands already. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, first speaker signed up was Susan Rosemark?
I signed up first. I know, I hit the foot, yes. All right. I'm reading this on behalf of Al, my husband. Dear members of the Village of Elba Board, I am writing to express my support for allowing Elba community members to operate golf carts, four-wheelers, low-speed vehicles within the village limits. Implementing such a policy would provide multiple benefits to our residents, especially those who rely on an alternative means of transportation for short local trips. This would create a welcome community for everyone, which is what Elba is all about. Some kids have been driving their vehicles for years. Over and over, these kids have watched out for us as we cross the street and walk our dogs. They let us know when trees are down, or a big transport is coming down the road. They always have kept us safe by patrolling our village and watching out for dangerous situations. As a veteran, I'm always wondered, who would stand up for others in these future generations? I've seen that these people in town are those stand-up kids, and I'm proud of how they help our Elba community. If we take this opportunity away, we will limit accessibility for elderly and disabled residents. We want people to take part in our community, and this is the way to help people do that. Please consider that not everyone in the community needs the same things as others. I understand that safety is a priority, and we can have clear rules, such as requiring proper lighting, speed limits, compliance with state and local traffic laws, to ensure responsible use. By implementing a well-regulated policy, we can address potential concerns. I appreciate your time and consideration of my opinion. We need to make our village more welcome and accessible to all. As a residence for decades, I believe this is what we need. And I do have a letter to submit into the record. That's signed by my husband.
My name is Jim Deal. I've been a Village resident my whole life, all 38 years. In terms of the village's law, a few problems that I do have with it is, number one specifically, the requirement to have written authority for, and carried upon someone's person when they're operating on private property. I think the village is overstepping in terms of how I give permission, or how my father, who lives in the village, would give permission for someone to operate on his land. With that being said, I'm curious on why the village feels like we need a law, and we're not going to enforce it. I think the village is opening up some liability to themselves about putting a law on the books and then telling the people that they're not going to enforce it. And I had a Village employee tell me that they would enforce it essentially arbitrarily, that they wouldn't enforce, that no one cares about the, I'll quote, "The Jimmy Deals of the world riding their four-wheeler down the road to get gas at the gas station," that they care about the 17-year-old kids who are riding up and down the street. I worked for the sheriff's office, and you can't ask a deputy to come out here and arbitrarily enforce the law that you're going to pass and put on the books to one party and not I'm also curious about the stipulation B, the subsequent violation, that the court may confiscate the vehicle in lieu of a fine or imprisonment. My understanding, and I could be wrong, but from my experience, is any confiscation or forfeiture under the law would have to be because of a crime. This would be in fact a violation, and I don't know under what law the village would be able to confiscate property of somebody's, if it's just a violation level offense. And then the redundancy of it. There are laws that say that under the vehicle and traffic law, it can't be operated on certain areas. Is it the village's stance that we're going to make laws that, all of New York State laws, that the village has to pass each one of those, or they hold liability? It doesn't make sense.
Okay, I'm not a public speaker, and my voice has been a bit out in the last few days. First thing I want to say is, we are not Batavia, we're not even Oakfield. This is a farming community, okay? And people use those things for farming purposes. Not their only thing, but part of it. As a small business owner, yes, my son's not here, he's taking his son to a basketball game. I can tell you that we get people on side-by-sides, four-wheelers, and snowmobiles to come down to his shop, okay? And they also, although I don't want to speak for the candy store, that we see four-wheelers and golf carts down there. A rough estimate is, the pizza shop makes between $1,000 and $2,000 a year off business from those vehicles coming down, whether it's a group of four, or just someone bringing their family down. That $1,000, that $1,500 may not mean much to somebody sitting here, okay? But to somebody having a small business in a small town, that's a lot of money to lose, because, and I'm going to use my adopted son, Pat Crawford, as an example. He brings his daughters down for pizza, okay? Well, he can't use his golf cart anymore, because it's too jacked up, it's too high. So, he puts his kids in the car to come down, but on the way down, "Hey, let's go to McDonald's, Dad," yippity, 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 in the backseat. So he decides he's going to McDonald's instead, and now he's getting his gas at McDonald's, and they're going to Dave's Ice Cream. You've just hurt three businesses in this town, and I don't know if you guys realize it, but there aren't that many businesses in this town. And you just kind of keep kicking us in the biscuits, okay? My other point is, is there are people, like myself, and I'm not going to speak for anybody else, who have a handicap, and I use my golf cart as a go-around to get to this place and others, okay? Nobody ever thinks about that. And there are other people that need that golf cart to move around. All right? I think you guys making a blanket cover on everything is just, it's just not feasible. And I guess, I guess that's what I got for now.
Yep. So, obviously, I'm not familiar with the whole law and how everything works, so I can't speak on the fact of covering yourselves and covering the village for potential lawsuits and whatnot, but when I read through the proposal, I just find concern that there's a line in there that there can be a peace officer appointed to enforce this law. Who's going to become that peace officer when you've already had troubles with yourself stopping people on golf carts and creating confrontation over them? So, I just feel like we're getting a little bit of an overreach. If you want to protect the town, or the village, then put a statement out there that's plain Jane, says, if that's exactly what you're going to do, is cover liability, say you can't use them, and leave it at that, not that you're going to enforce it, and there's additional violations that are coming along with it, because who's going to become the enforcer? That's my concern.
I've got a concern about my business at the other end of town. I've got a Kubota side-by-side, no different than the village has, and I use that to maintain the property. At my welding shop on our railroad bed, you know, I use it to spray around the property, trim trees. It's fully insured. I carry that on, that piece of equipment. It doesn't do 60 miles an hour like these new side-by-sides, it goes 21 or 22 miles an hour, top speed. So, the way that the law reads, in my opinion, I guess is, I'm going to get a ticket if I get pulled over, in that if I cross a sidewalk down at the other end of town...
Directly across, you're not getting...
Well...
It's not written.
You know, if I go down the road, you know, to another piece of my property, I'm going to get in trouble with it, and it's going to get impounded. I guess those are my concerns.
What's that?
Yeah, if it's somebody in my business, you know, that I've, one of my employees, they can get in trouble with it. I'm just wondering about those aspects also. I mean, I use it for my business purposes, no different than a farmer would. I mean, I've seen farmers use utility vehicles around town for spreading fertilizer, or spraying also. You know, I mean, cut a load of wood, whatever. People do that. We're in a rural community, hauling wood on the back of them. So, and the other thing, uh, snowmobiles. It's not going to affect anything as far as the snowmobile trails go, because in the village?
The way it's written.
The way it's written now, it says it will. Is that going to be written different? Or how is that?
Snowmobiles, you can, as long as you're on the trails, you can crawl, and you, with the landowner's permission, it says right in the vehicle and traffic laws, it goes directly across. It hasn't changed since...
We own three miles of trail in town, and I know some other farmers do. So it's stating that, the way that it's written, I believe, the way, what I read, I don't know, that, that everyone has to have written permission in that club. Maybe I'm not understanding it right.
If you're on the...
Absolutely.
My termination, well, I'll explain after we get on the speaker.
Okay, it just needs clarification on it, and if it needs to be written different to cover it in a different way, that's, that's what we're, I am asking also. I guess that's all I got.
I'm against this proposed law. Not only is it redundant, I think it's overly harsh in the requirements to carry written permission dated within six months if you're riding on private property. I think confiscation of a vehicle at the first offense, and sale of that vehicle after second offense is ridiculously harsh. I think the law is poorly written in that it's discriminating against people that use things like golf carts, or handicapped people that use golf carts. I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be able to use them on the sidewalk. The same thing for, what about power wheelchairs on the sidewalk? The way this law is written, can't have that, you'd be arrested, and their wheelchair's taken away from them. Battery-assisted bicycles, can't have them either. What about my granddaughter's Barbie Jeep? It's not pedal power. Must be you're going to confiscate that and sell it, too. Matter of fact, if you read your definition of an off-highway vehicle, it says any vehicle prepared or propelled by other than muscular power. Now, the car I drove here today is not muscular power, it is a vehicle. So by your definition, that's an off-highway vehicle, and that's not allowed on village streets. I think, yeah, if you're even considering this, a lot of this needs to be rewritten and rethought. That's all I got.
Barb Sturz?
I'm also representing my brother Andrew Sturz, who has the farmland behind my house, 12 South Main Street, that the snowmobile trail goes through. I'm representing my brothers who own the tower, which is also in the village, that we bought from Bink Wilford behind the school. This all affects us highly. Currently, you have the traffic and safety laws in New York State that are in place to follow. Additionally, the village wants to personally add, and I'm highlighting the operation on private property, that it's going to be unlawful, and you have to have the written consent from the owner, and also, I have to, under item three, I have to deliver a copy of the said written revocation to the village clerk and treasurer. And then also, for the impound of the vehicles, you know, stating that any of the off-road vehicles in violation, you're, in the case of the second one, it will be sold at public auction, and then for your second offense, it's going to be impound, and I can face a fine of $250, or imprisonment of 15, 15 days after the second day. We want to express, the snowmobile trail has been going through our property, we've been farming this land for over 50 years. The snowmobile trail comes through to have access to the business of CHIPS and the former Stumbleon. Now, according to this, you keep on saying that the snowmobile trail will not be affected. This is the four squares of a contract. The contract supersedes what a snowmobile club has done, and what the safety violation, or the safety laws are in place right now. If you enforce this contract, snowmobiles will be in violation, because that's the way that your contract is written, okay? Now, reading from your comprehensive law that the village is supposed to follow, there was a survey, and according to your survey, both the town and the village, this represents for both of them, okay? Now, the village input says the number of residents is indicative for the recreational space and facilities. There's a strong preference for the Town of Elba to preserve its rural character, and for town zoning regulations to protect and preserve the agricultural resources in this town, meaning village also. So you, as a village board, are to protect the preference of having this as an agricultural town. We shouldn't be following the Town of Batavia. Using this comprehensive plan, both government bodies and individual citizens stand to realize outcomes within our community which include effective use of the town's resources and produce a high level of resident satisfaction. Okay, so when you enacted this law, what resident satisfaction did you even start to get? My family never got no notice, there was no surveys, I looked through the town minutes, you said that this has been going on. The only blurb in the town minutes that the residents of this area knew there was a problem is said, November, there was a complaint about a dirt bike. Maybe I'm missing something. So, if there are violations, maybe the village can provide all of us citizens of what the violations are, and what the actions that the town board did. How did this even start? Are there accident reports? Is this why there's a big uproar? Because there already is the New York State safety law that everybody follows, and not every single town has verbiage to say, needing permission slips on private property, and especially with the snowmobile club coming through, or we own the railroad tracks. Now, do I have to have special permission? On the railroad tracks, we pay village taxes. Right now, the town is in violation of the comprehensive plan that you're supposed to follow. To make additional, read in there, it says, the village is to make additional recreational space of facilities while protecting and preserving the agricultural resources of this town. We're not the Town of Batavia, and there's several neighboring towns that do not even have this verbiage. For example, pull up Bergen, go into their comprehensive plan, and their zoning, they section off roads for the snowmobile club to ride down the roads. After reading parts of the comprehensive plan, it is very clear that the village and the village board are not following the, producing a high level of resident satisfaction.
Thank you, Barb.
Thanks.
All the comments, I'll make a couple of brief comments.
Excuse me, do you mind if I get another 30 seconds? Can I have another 30 seconds?
Real quick, yeah.
Okay. What I wanted to say, that it's my belief that you guys can push this through anyway, and if you do that, there's nothing, not much we can do about it. But, what you should be putting in there is an amendment that says, you can't change any of the rules of this thing that you're going to vote on in a month, okay? And add your own stipulations farther down the road, and just keep adding, this, 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 and this, okay? That can't happen. It shouldn't happen, not without a vote of the village. So that should be put in your new law, if that's what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Okay, before we close the public hearing, a couple of comments, first on your changes. We can't add anything. If anything, we can subtract, which is why we have the hearing. We'll take into consideration, look at what we can pull out.
Okay, my concern is, you guys are still government, and government just keeps reaching in and reaching in all over the place, whether it be local, state, federal.
I understand. And Barbie, you keep mixing in town and village. This is the village, not the town.
According to your comprehensive plan, you can pull it up on your website right now, it said in your plan that with the survey and the comprehensive plan, that it's equal with the village and the town, so both are to abide by the same rules. So, yes.
No, wrong there, but, as far as riding on the snowmobile trails, I talked to our attorney at length today, and previously about this. Because the snowmobile trails are marked trails, the snowmobile club, it's implied consent, so you don't need to have written consent for everybody you ride on. It's implied consent, so they can ride up and down through your property all they want.
It's private property, according, this is a, this is a contract for everyone. Snowmobiles, four-wheelers, everybody has to obey by the same rules. This is the way that it's written. So if they're on my property, going through...
If they're in town, if they're in town, you got to talk to the town.
The village?
The gas station from the trail.
The trail?
That is, that has not, that's the deputies, it's illegal, I mean, the law's in the...
I just want to reiterate, I have heard a couple of things through your comments, obviously you guys are entitled to your concerns, and they are of concern. A lot of these things are only going to be able to be addressed, you know, by the board with this ordinance being passed. I have to reiterate again, there are laws in place already, the vehicle and traffic law, so anything that is by definition a motor vehicle cannot be operated on a public highway, sidewalks, those laws are already in place in the vehicle and traffic law imposed by the state. Those things are already in place, and unregistered motor vehicles are already subject to be, it's a violation, an unlicensed operator of a vehicle, we can tow the vehicle as it stands right now, as far as seizures and all that stuff goes.
Yeah, that...
That's not something that we would be enforcing. That would be, you know, if, if the property was to be towed, it would be towed to a tow yard, if we were to enforce something like that, as far as with Town of Batavia, I can't speak to what they have, if they are replicating what they have. But, again, we are here to just speak to the vehicle and traffic law. I know there's a lot of concern here, but we cannot reiterate it enough that there already are vehicle and traffic laws in place, side-by-sides, anything. Those are all considered, you know, four-wheelers, they're, those are motor vehicles by definition. They cannot just be driven down the roadway because they are unregistered.
Will you address the electric wheelchair?
So the wheelchair, so, they have the definition in here, other than muscular power. So, as far as electric bikes go, those are kind of a newer phenomenon, there are specific laws to electric bikes that are in the vehicle and traffic law, but as far as the, the, to be considered a vehicle, they have to reach a certain speed.
I understand that, sir.
This isn't any vehicle.
No, I know.
The driver they drove here in, not muscular power.
Correct, but there's also a separate definition in the VTL that addresses a motor vehicle.
I don't think, you know what they say, you know what they mean.
Sir, I'm here to address the New York State law.
That's why I...
I know.
And maybe there could be some clarification to be made, you know, by mirroring the vehicle and traffic law, but you know, we, we do enforce the state law, not, you know, the ordinance in the sense of, you know, that's what we're bound by when we're going to make a traffic stop. And I believe the speed, don't quote me, is 20 miles an hour, if whoever asked that, so.
Yes, I did. Speed limit of less than 20 miles an hour, is that what you're saying, sir?
I believe so.
Okay. So, just for sake of argument, if somebody's driving a four-wheeler, and they're going less than 20 miles an hour, they're not really breaking the law, are they?
Capable of 20 miles an hour.
Oh, capable of, okay.
So can we address Andy's pizza concern about him delivering pizza to the school?
Yes.
If you see him, are you pulling him over and giving him a ticket?
So, I mean, the tickets are at the discretion of the officer, you know, that's on a case-by-case basis, you know? However, by you driving a motor vehicle down the road that is unregistered, and if it is a juvenile, I know there's some concerns about a juvenile, which would, an unlicensed operator, those in and of themselves are already violations of the vehicle and traffic law.
Hey, but I'm not a juvenile.
Correct, you have a driver's license, but you're driving a motor vehicle down the road.
It goes less than 20 miles an hour.
I go less than 20, my car, it does not go 20 miles an hour, not even close.
I don't think that is necessarily that, I think it's, people are calling in certain things, so they're not just driving down the road, being like, oh, Andy's pizzas, I'm going to pull him over. I think it's certain cases where they're being called to, where certain people are being, not targeted, because that's not a great word, but it has to be won across the board. I think is where the concern is, is, how do you say, well, I'm not going to pull Andy's on his thing, but I'm not going to pull Frankie over, but I'm going to pull this kid over? I mean...
Well, that's up to whoever...
I mean...
Well, that's up to whoever has the problem with Andy's pizza going to the school.
Right.
That's the community member, is, if the community member's calling the police on you, that's the community member, it's not the village. And if the sheriff wants to do something about it, that's his, that's the law.
Well, then, so they would have to deal with...
It's not the local law, it's the law.
So why do you want...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the Americans with Disabilities Act would become their problem now.
Again, I mean, if you're riding down the road in an electric wheelchair, we're not gonna bother you.
I'm a heavy guy. I use my golf cart, I don't have a wheelchair.
What was that saying?
The lawsuit.
Can't be...
You can't lead the flow of crap, I got a road...
The community members will call certain people in because they don't like what they're doing.
We understand everybody's concerns. Okay? The nuances of the village ordinances, I mean, we deal with all the ordinances in all the different villages and stuff like that. As deputies, it's hard to know all the ordinances, 'cause there's tons of them. That's why there's websites where they have them posted and all that stuff. You know, it's a case-by-case basis. We were here, I guess, in a sense, to just reassure you that the New York State law is New York State law. Whatever, whatever nuances the village is pushing forward, that's between you and the residents here in the village of Elba. I am not a village resident, so I can't speak to this community. It's a great community, but I mean, as it stands, have you ever seen the sheriff's office as the Gestapo tearing up four-wheelers and, you know?
We're not worried about you, we're worried about the board and...
So, I guess my warning to you is, is if you're on a public highway, IE-98, that comes right through town, just know that there's the possibility that somebody could ban you in, and you're gonna get a ticket for it.
One Sunday morning, if I may speak, I got pulled over with my side-by-side with a load of wood behind it.
Yep.
Hauling it to my shop, using it as a utility vehicle.
Okay. It's not registered to be on the roadway, sir.
Right. I'm just saying, so I asked the officer, this is no more than a farm tractor. So if I go home and hook my farm tractor that goes forty miles an hour...
Farm tractor's different than a UTV, by definition in the VTL.
How? Okay.
I'm just telling you what the state says.
'Cause the state defined it differently.
If you can prove that UTV is used explicitly for farming and agriculture, then the state allows you to use it as such.
Yes, I have a farm, and I do use it for farming.
But the UTV has to be registered as such.
Okay, where is that in New York? How do we do that?
New York State doesn't allow you to.
You have to call New York State DMV.
No. Under New York State law, anything that is over 1,000 pounds cannot be registered.
You put a slow-moving sign on it, and it goes on twenty miles an hour.
Okay, and you guys are farmers, so you would know that probably better than I would. I'm not a farmer. However, there are farm exemptions, but according to what we're reading here in the New York State law...
I have it from the DMV.
A UTV has to be explicitly used for agriculture.
So it says right here, can a UTV be declared as a farm agricultural vehicle? No.
So you gotta write it off on taxes, you can buy it with a farm guide, but you can't use it?
If you're looking for the definition of an agricultural equipment, it's in...
The state legislature has failed in defining it, because they don't see the farmers as using the UTVs as a farm vehicle.
So it's the same thing as a truck.
It's an unregistered truck, you can't...
Also, if used in, there's different counties in this state that allow use of off-road vehicles, and they get away with that no problem, so I don't understand how it can become an issue here.
Let me check in this on the trails.
Lewis County and Oswego County, to be particular.
Well, that's the county, we're gonna end this now, just one, couple of statements. We're not trying to police anybody. This is basically what we said, put it on the books. If a lawsuit, we were notified by sheriff, complained to the sheriff's department last year, and by the prior written notice law in New York State, we had to do something. So all we're doing is putting it in our books. We have no authority legally to create VNT laws or enforce them. It's up to, if somebody wants to, as it has always been, if Mr. So-and-so wants to file a complaint to the sheriff's office or state troopers, they can. We're not policing anybody.
But you're making, you're legal for me to give...
You are if you're stopping somebody on the sidewalk personally.
But you're making it, you're making it against the law for me to give verbal permission to someone to use a UTV on my own property.
We can look at that.
That's overstep, that's, that's officer's... It's my property, I should be able to give verbal permission or any other permission that I want to my friend to travel on my own property and not have to have them have a permission slip on them while they do that.
With a six-month note, like, that's extreme.
We will take everything into consideration, that's a valid point.
So I have to have three landlords' permissions?
The one point you made about the confiscating a vehicle, that came from your chief deputy.
That came from him, or he gave you a law with it in it?
He came in, heard with it.
For children under sixteen.
Especially if it's a, because if a kid under, a child under sixteen is riding a dirt bike up and down Main Street...
We can't confiscate it. It can get towed if it's illegally at some place and it can't be legally operated to get to somewhere else. It can be towed. I will tell you, there are several times where if it's me sitting on the side of a road, waiting for an hour to tow a vehicle, or if their house is two minutes down the street, I'm gonna drive it two minutes down the street where I'm gonna park it instead of wasting my time with an hour waiting for a tow. But I'll also tell you, as I looked into the Department of General Justice Services, and the only thing that I could find, with the exception of a Civil Practices Law, 1311, or the Penal Law 480, with both states, it has to be involved in a crime, which is a misdemeanor or a felony, in order to be confiscated. These are violation-level offenses, and they would not classify or constitute a forfeiture by the government under a violation-level offense.
We'll look into it. So this came from, ruled by our village attorney, and that's, we're gonna look into all the concerns everybody had tonight. This isn't, we haven't voted on this yet. We voted to bring it forward to public hearing, but with all the concerns, we'll take them into consideration.
But I'm concerned on a village that has this on their paper, or on their, on their table, is reading it over, and is not having the same concerns that I'm having as a village resident, and saying, "Isn't this a little bit overstep on our part to even be consider this into a law?" Would I wanna have my neighbor or myself have to abide by this same exact law and have essentially, like, you're bringing this to light, right? So the people that have driven down the road for years, whether in violation or not, whether they got away with it or not, okay, great, but what you're doing is you're bringing it to light, so if a newly formed law passes, you don't think there's a resident in Elba that's gonna call the sheriffs when, before they may not have made it a big deal and say, "Hey, this is now a big deal. So-and-so's driving from one property to another, I guarantee they don't have permission slips on them." And I truly think, like, the liability factor, what liability do you have when it's already against the law? What, what liability does the village hold when you can say it's already a violation of state law to do it?
We imply...
It's being redundant.
No, if, if we...
You didn't do nothing, Norm, you called the sheriff's office and reported it. The sheriff's office said to their deputies, "Hey, the village mayor called on it, go out there and try to enforce it." You're not doing...
I never called on that.
It was the village resident.
You never talked to Brian Friday at all last year.
I talked to Brian about what we can do about it, 'cause a concern was brought to us.
And your concerns were brought to the sheriff's office. So you did talk to a member of the sheriff's office about a concern about this issue. It was relayed to deputies and said, "Hey, come on out." The village is not doing nothing. And I don't understand where the liability comes in, that you need to pass a law when it's already against the law. Do you have to pass a law against murder so that no one in the village gets murdered and then...
That's going a little too far.
I understand that, but it's the same thing.
And if you're not gonna enforce it, then take out the enforcement.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but most of you don't live in the village. Last year, there were so many nights where there were dirt bikes and four-wheelers flying down my street in the dark without any lights on. Now, one rotten apple spoils the barrel. Those kids, or adults, or whoever they were, are causing a problem.
Amy, it's already on the books.
Right. So we need to do something to stop it.
A new lawsuit could be there.
This is the new...
You're overreaching. If you all live in an HOA, move to an HOA. This is not an HOA.
But the thing is, my personal...
You don't live in the village, you don't have the kids.
What I do...
People riding up and down the streets in the middle of the night in the dark.
You're acting like it's every night.
Somebody's gonna have, get killed.
You're right, it was one bad apple. You're right.
I understand your concerns. You're making your own decision by making a bad decision. If you get into an accident, my personal opinion, that is on you. You knew better. It's not my job to call it in. By the time they get caught, they're long gone, and my opinion is, it's a waste of resources for them to get called, come out here. I already know they're short-staffed, so to me...
It's a waste of resources to call the police for four-wheelers going up and down the village road.
When you actually get called here, so fifteen minutes down the road, which is called the actual time. So, no, let me talk.
I'm just saying, there are residents who have concerns, and that want to call the police.
In motion to end the public hearing.
Not when people still have issues.
No, 'cause people that wanted to speak signed up, and we're just arguing back and forth, and that's back and forth.
And because she didn't wanna talk, she started talking all along?
I did finish my, I was interrupted, though. That's the issue.
Public hearing, we filed the exact public hearing laws in New York State. Everybody wanted to speak, folks?
You know what?
And now it's getting to an arguing back and forth or ending a public hearing.
No, it's not an argument, it's just a point of opinion that couldn't finish.
It's not, to be fair, she was in the middle of a statement, and one of your members interrupted her to cut off the...
You caught me off.
I'm sorry.
No, it was just...
I just, I didn't understand what you're saying.
I was trying to explain, I don't think it's a waste to call the officers. I'm saying, at the time they get called, response time, fifteen minutes, they're gone.
I get that, I get that.
So to me, that's what I'm saying, like, is it worth doing anything about it when...
Yeah. I guess the biggest...
I mean, I'm in the village, I'm across from you.
Yeah, I, right, and same thing, like, when the four-wheelers go down the street at three in the morning, by the time I even wake up and hear it, they're gone. So that's what, it is what it is.
Well, last year, it was like ten o'clock, we got hit a couple times, and we had no lights on.
I mean, but the point is...
They're old enough to figure out.
We all know what it was.
That's honestly, that's not my problem to call that in, like, you know. Well, the prob, we have to protect the village residents, and the problem is, if there's something happens, and we have nothing on the books, and there is an accident, I guarantee you, there will be a lawsuit, that we will now have to guy, get a lawyer, figure out how we're not gonna be responsible for somebody that got hit by somebody coming out of their driveway on their golf cart, or whatever it might be. But trust, trust me, if it's not on our books, we will be liable, and that is from our lawyer. We don't want any unnecessary lawsuits because Andy's Pizza got hit going to the school. Like, I'm just trying to let you know, this is an overreach. We're protecting the village, we're protecting our community. We, we are not calling the police on Frankie Panna going down the street to the school. We are, we are not enforcing that.
But that's not saying that's another community member.
But when you pass this law, why not?
Everybody's under the same umbrella.
When you pass this law...
Because it's the law, I get...
When you pass this law, the village wants, open themselves up for liability. Pass this law, and don't call a single person in there.
Yeah.
Because I'll tell you right now, if it's not called, then when you do pass it, you're opening yourself up for a hell of a lot of liability than you are right now.
I will leave that up to my neighbors who wanna call the police on Frankie Panna, but I personally, sitting here at the office, am not doing that.
Ask your lawyer how much liability you'll have when you pass the law, and then you don't enforce it.
So...
We can't legally enforce it.
You can call, you can call the sheriff's office and ask them to enforce it.
I can't call tomorrow morning, say, "Somebody called me," and said, "For," I didn't see it, I'm not, it's, it's...
But you're stopping people in your own vehicle, telling them that it's illegal, correct?
Me?
Yes.
Which is more dangerous than anything.
In my own vehicle.
Pat Crawford?
Pull right in front of Pat Crawford.
On a sidewalk.
Yes, you did.
With his children, with his golf cart.
The lecture room.
I stopped, oh, I stopped totally, it's not legal riding.
But that wasn't your place. That wasn't your place to do that.
Probably wasn't.
But I'm, I'm away from that. I'm away from that. What I wanna know is, if this is only for insurance reasons, and I do understand the insurance reasons, then you should've just said, "We're gonna do this because of insurance reasons." And don't add all that other stuff in there, because it's already against the law to begin with. It doesn't need to be, okay? But once, once, once you put this in, who's going to enforce it? Because they're not gonna be able to make it out here on time. Do you want him to jump out of his night clothes and come running out in his car to get somebody? All, all we're saying is, if you need to make it for insurance purposes, then do this. It's not for insurance purposes.
No, it's for liability.
That's liability insurance, right?
How's it liability when you're saying private property? Private property, that's on us.
Yes. Why are you demanding private property owners to, demanding what we do and what we allow on our property, you're mandating giving permission slips, then you're mandating, "I gotta give," in writing to your town clerk when I take away a permission slip? That's the verbiage in this contract that you have to enforce with snowmobiles and everything. It doesn't say, "What if I have one of my family members that is not a member of the snowmobile club?